All right, everyone, thanks for coming. It's now 6:31. Welcome to the meeting in order. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as published?
I'll make that motion.
All right, any discussion?
We're going to have EDC appointment.
We can do that. Put that under old business because it's been discussed previously. All right, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the amended agendas, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, next item, approval of minutes. We have two sets to approve. First one is the regular Board of Selectmen meeting held on February 10th, 2020. I assume both of you have had a chance to take a look at the minutes. I have a motion to approve the minutes as they were written. All right, any discussion, any amendments?
I would just do one clarification. Under the selectmen's update where we talk about the budget, on four lines down, Haddon gave us seven students, Kellywood lost 76, approximately $1 million. The school budget will stay flat. I think it should read approximately $1 million increase for Haddon if the school budget stays flat. Just clarification, if somebody's reading these and didn't go to the meeting or is not
And I would say on the next line where it says the legislature is in session, not sure what we'll go from that. All right, any other discussion? Will we approve the minutes as amended? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, approved as amended. Second set of minutes is a special Board of Selectmen's meeting held on February 13th to finalize the board's review of the town operating budget or town budget. Again, I assume you've had a chance to take a look at it. Any amendments to the minutes?
No.
All right, can I have a motion to approve as written, as written rather? Make that motion. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Thank you. All right, public comments. Again, I'd ask you to keep it to a limited three minutes. And just a reminder, this is, even though we do get in discussion from time to time, this is not intended to be a question and answer session unless we can deal with it quickly. So with that, I would open the floor to comments.
Jeff Dallas had a neck. I'm here to discuss Kirk Park and Parkhurst Road paving.
Okay.
As we know, they paved it late last year. Within a week, they were back to put patches in the road because it was, quote, "thin" in a few places. Well, they put in eight or nine patches. Now the road's already breaking up. There's potholes in it already. I know they're supposed to come back and put, you know, a seat, a top coat on it, but I was told it was only going to be two-inch base and an inch of top coat. If the road's already coming apart now, if you put another wrench on it, I don't believe it's going to hold up. I just don't think it's right that we spent all this time and money on it and it's already falling apart. I think we should check on it whether it's bad material or the contractor didn't put down enough. Okay, some places, if the road basically happened, it's some face coat on it. You know, I don't believe that's proper.
Okay. Now, can I bring out the public works?
Yes, I mean, I just think, you know, we spend all this money. The road shouldn't be falling apart. It's only been four months.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, so I received your email, Bob, about the transfer amount that you guys will discuss, I assume, under the charter revision section. So I wanted to speak first to give my opinion of that. You did state that the lawyer says that it's legal. If that's the case, it being legal doesn't necessarily mean it's being, it's correct or it should be that high. I think, first of all, it's an arbitrary formula. People shouldn't have to do math to figure out what they have to transfer every time. Second of all, I don't see why we would go beyond and above the state statute limitation, which is $20,000, even if it is legal, which I question. But $20,000 is a lot without the input of the residents and I suggest and strongly ask that you make that around $10,000. If you look at other towns around the state, that's, most towns are at $10,000. And I don't know of any that are over 20, so. And that's even cities, so, thank you.
Thank you, Allison. And, yeah, I'm here. It's from the Haddon Road. I'm here to give you a list. As we promised our readers in our last survey, we said that we asked the question, as you travel, which roads or portion of those you think needs immediate attention? And we told them that if they wanted to identify that, we would give the list to the Board of Selectmen and to Mr. Corsa, the Assistant Public Works. So below in order and frequency, I'm going to quickly go through it. And the ones that came first are the ones that are most important. So, yeah, Bitter City Road, Cannonwood Hill, Christian Hill, Beaver Meadow, Turkey Hill, and Cedar Lake Roads, Brainerd Hill, Parmerly Road, Jail Hill Road, High Street, Thayer Road, Maple Avenue West, Dublin Hill, Maple Avenue East, Quarry Hill, Old Chester Road, Creepvine Road, Quarry Hill on the Haddon Lake side, Indian Hollow Road on the Haddon Lake side, Ben Clark Hill, Thayer Road Extension here, Pitlick Road, Wiesalberts Road, Oakridge Drive, Depot Road, Lanning Road, Higginham, Rocklandy Road, Haddon Lake, Park Road, Gulf Boy Road, Campethon Road, and Neon Dividie Road. In general, in the comments, I think what people were looking for is, they know it's not going to happen overnight, but they want to know where their vote stood in terms of what your plans are. So I'm going to leave you with the list and you can peruse it. There's some comments in there.
Thank you.
One comment that I have also to make is for Ms. Jeanne Marshall on Old Chester Road. She said there is a, there was a, an issue with, at the intersection with Clark Road and that she had called the public works multiple times and she never got an answer. So I told her I would provide that information. Thank you.
Okay, what roads were that?
Old Chester Road is after 82, the extension of 82.
Okay, and you said it was at Old Chester and it was an intersection?
And Clark.
On Clark.
W Clark Road. There's actually an orange hole there, but I think, she said it's kind of dangerous.
Okay. That's the one I'm thinking of. We're going to put a marker there, but I will double check.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? And I will say, and I'll take a look through your list, but I know a number of those roads. I was just looking at some of our thoughts on roads, projects, and I actually writing up for, from the selectmen's call for next month. Little City is on there, Dublin Hill is on there, Depot is on there. Yeah, forgive me, I don't remember the lot. And what did this survey actually run? I'm asking because Quarry Hill Road was done last year?
In February.
Was February, okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, other comments? All right, hearing none, let's move on to the next item, Selectmen's update. Again, I invite comment from my fellow selectmen on either any of the items I bring up or if you have anything else to add. I'll start as I did last time, update on some of the major product, projects around the, excuse me. Higginham Center, the Economic Development Committee has met with Main Street Program. Main Street is one of the groups that works toward promoting the main streets of many towns, as many of them have seen declines with the start of the malls in the 70s. It's been a program that's been going on for a number of years. They've helped a number of towns improve. We are members of Main Street. They came in to give a presentation on what services they can offer and how they can help us with the revitalization of Higginham Center. That was given at the 12 February meeting. Kate, any you want to add to that?
The presentation that the Main Street gave to EDC is available on the town website under the EDC page, under News and Announcements. It's just a copy of the presentation slides.
Okay, and work continues by EDC on setting up a merchants' association. I'd really like to encourage the merchants to join. They should have input, particularly the ones in Higginham Center, as to what's going on. And an association is a good way to do that, to have a united voice. Leasing of Haddon Elementary, negotiations are continuing. I've told you there's a school that's interested in it. Just before our last board meeting, their board of directors toured the school. They're very interested in it. With every contact we have with them, I'm more encouraged that we'll come to a deal that's in both parties' interests, but it's a caution all along until the contract is signed. You never know what's going to happen, but so far that still looks good. It is progressing. The other item relative to Haddon Elementary and also the town green, just like the town has a plan about conservation and development, a P O C D, state has one also. They're revising their plan. Their plan breaks various towns into districts. Haddon is no exception. We've asked for an amendment to that plan to include the school grounds, what we own the nine acres, plus the town green into the village funding priority area. The rest of Higginham Center is the Rossi properties in. As you come south, properties are in it. It's just that area ended at the school Rossi property line. We're asking to extend it, like I said, to include the school and the town green because that opens up development and funding opportunities for it. I submitted testimony to that extent for a hearing that was today and hopefully that goes through without too much of a problem. We've talked with OPM on it and we're following their recommendations as they had to proceed. Community Septic, another big item for the center, on the school ground area. Last month, I had a meeting with the Department of Public Health and the State Department of Public Health and our town engineering firm. Septic regulations fall under either the Department of Public Health or Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, depending on how big a system you're talking about. We're doing our best and the state is concurring to help us keep the design in the Department of Public Health regulation because they're not as stringent as Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. So we had a meeting with Department of Public Health and our engineers to agree with the proposal. DPH, who's been working closely with us, is pleased with the work we've done so far. We also got a letter this month from DPH with the concurrence of Energy and Environmental Protection concurring with our plans and how we want to move forward. It's not a blessing, but it's an approval for the process we're going through. So again, that was good news as well. Finally, in the community septic area, if, not if, when we establish a community septic system, there needs to be a water pollution control authority established. We've developed draft, a draft ordinance to establish that, sent it to the town attorney for his review and comment. Last thing I have in Higginham Center is Muckit Madness, and I'll turn over to Kate for a few words on that.
So Muckit Madness is obviously, it's a new event that EDC is planning to have in town. It is absolutely the brainchild of Mark Lundgren, who deserves all the credit for it. It is scheduled to be held Saturday of August 15th, rain or shine. The bulk of the activities we are trying to plan will include a triathlon that will take place in Higginham Center with the reservoir. There will be a tractor parade, food trucks, music, entertainment, tentatively also trying to merge this event with Haddon River Days, which historically is, is held at the Meadows. It ends with fireworks. We do need to get state approval to move that date, which we will be likely submitting next month, so hopefully that will happen as well. An event of this magnitude takes a lot of volunteers and a lot of work. There's multiple different subcommittees. There's a subcommittee just for the triathlon, one just for food and entertainment, one just for the tractor parade. So if you are interested, reach out to myself or Mark Lundgren. We will take all the help we can get.
Okay, thank you, Kate. Last project for an update, Tyloville Water. Pretty much as I told you at the last monthly meeting, they're working on connections. Those are continuing. We do have some properties where the water company's having difficulty getting in, that's holding up those individual properties. We have some owners who are objecting as they want to maintain or keep their existing wells, which they can. This whole process was established by a town ordinance. The ordinance does have a procedure they can go through to get an exception to, to keep their well, not for drinking water, but for other purposes. Other items from the last month. If you noticed on today's agenda, we have a Board of Education member, Jared Matthews, has resigned from the board. We have to set a town meeting to vote on a new representative. I've contacted both political parties, their town chairs, gotten recommendations from them as candidates, and we will also have it up with the notice that its nominations are taken from the floor at that town meeting, so anyone can come and not get nominated to be on the Board of Education. The vote will be at the town meeting. Again, an update, that we are still in budget season. One of the minutes we approved was for the Board of Finance, or Board of, excuse me, Selectmen approving the operating budget to go to the Board of Finance. Board of Finance is probably about 95% of the way through approving the town's department, the operating budget for the town. There's just a couple left for them to review, insurance being one of them. Again, I encourage you, if you have comments, get in touch with the Board of Finance. They're meeting weekly now on Monday nights, so if you want to talk about the existing proposal, I'd suggest being there this coming Monday night because that might be their last meeting on that. But you can always submit written comments to them or to the Board of Selectmen. As it stands right now, our town budget is up for, I mean, almost $500,000. A good part of that, $220,000 can be attributed to Haddon Elementary. $50,000 of that was for more money for tree cutting, as we've discussed at a previous Board of Selectmen's meeting. And roughly $130,000 of that was due to anticipated increases in health insurance costs. Although on a bright note, the school, school district, which is in that same health plan, was told the increase would not be the 11%, that we've all been told to expect in New York County, might be closer to 3%. We haven't got that notice, but that would make a significant cut in the town budget, which would be nice to see. Thursday night, there was a joint meeting of the Boards of Selectmen, Boards of Finance, with the Board of Education for the Regional School District 17 budget. They presented their budget. There was questions and answers about it, some back and forth. Their budget request is up for the year. And as I said, last month, just a change in the enrollment, in fact, PAXUS. And then on top of that, the increase of the budget. As it stands right now, we'd be looking at about $1.2 million increase in our contribution to the school costs. Board of, the Board of Education will be discussing the budget at a number of public meetings. They have a hearing where it's open for public comment. If you want to make comments, please check their website to get the timing of that. And again, I'm sure you can submit written comments if you'd like to do that. And Brenda, you might be touching on that in your update tonight? No? Okay. Other things, I had a meeting with nine, actually, the Estuary Transit District. They run nine-town transit that provides the bus service in our area. We are technically not members of that district right now. We just subscribe to the service. There's talk in the works of the Estuary Transit District merging with the Middletown Transit District. They're interested in us being full-blown board members and joining the transit district with that in mind, because we're right between the two. I think it'd be in our advantage to it. We're going to explore it. It would not entail any additional costs. We already paid pretty much as much as we were going to, just because we pay for the service, not to be members of the board. Last two things I want to talk about, there was a public meeting held a couple of weeks ago in this room about information meeting, a proposal for sidewalks in Tyloville. Fairly well-attended, 40 or so people, which is unfortunately, even though it's a low number, a good number for attending meetings like that. Very positive reception from the, from the crowd. One of the people who spoke was against it or concerned that the town is better used for money than our portion of the project costs. Pretty much all the merchants were in line and supporting it, and a couple of other comments were positive. But if you want information on it, go to the land use section on the town website. Should have the presentation on there, including a nice animation of what it would look like, roughly. It's a first cut, 30% design. There's also a way you can make input to the town planner, Bill Warner, on what you think of it. And I would encourage you to do so. Last thing I want to talk about is a COVID-19 coronavirus outbreak. I've got, we've got something up on the website. We're relying on the help district for their updates. We're getting frequent updates recently. As I'm sure you know, if you're following in the news, this is changing every day. I think it's something to be concerned about. I don't think it's something to panic about at this point. Got a meeting this week, I think it's Thursday, with Killenworth and the school, Board of Ed, not the Board of Ed, the school superintendent and staff, to talk about our potential response as this, this gets worse. Again, we're, we're tracking it as best we can. We're staying on top of it as best we can. My advice is follow what the CDC is saying. Stay away from people, wash your hands. Make some preparation, but let's not panic about this. It's not up to that level, or at least not yet, and hopefully it never gets there. All right, Sean? Kate, you in that? Okay, then let's move on. Board of Education update. Brenda?
Good evening. Brenda Buzzey, Board of Education Liaison, Haddon. This is a summary for February 2020 Board of Education meetings for school education activities. Cougar Pride, eighth grader Joe, Jonah Keithin Resnick was recognized as the RSD 17 student to win the Patriots Pen Competition in Connecticut. As a Connecticut representative, Jonah's essay, "What Makes America Great," will compete against students from each state for the national prize. Recognition was also given to the Haddon-Killenworth High School girls cross-country team for winning their Class S state championship. For community mentor program, the principals at the elementary schools have approved a partnership with HK Youth and Family for a new school-based mentoring program. The program will run during the school day and details will follow on how community members can, and should be encouraged, to apply to become a mentor. Effective School Solutions. In a special meeting, the board addressed the increase of special education outplacements, the related costs, reasons, and outlook for RSD 17. This elevation in emotional behavior disorders is consistent in school districts across the state. In response to the marked increase, Effective School Solutions, ESS, was proposed by administration as an effective and less expensive alternative that provides clinical services inside our schools instead of sending identified students to expensive specialized schools outside of our district. The board gave consent to contracting with ESS, and it'll begin, it began this month, in March, to be implemented in our high school and our middle school. The math program. The superintendent and the board discussed the merits of a new math text and computer program with assessments, problem-solving, and testing for kindergarten through eighth grade. The board will consider and vote on its adoption at the next regular meeting of the board. Capital improvements. The Killenworth Elementary School roof, the board approved immediate replacement on a section of the roof in Killenworth Elementary School directly over the kitchen after a failure caused damage inside the building. Construction was completed over President's Day weekend and will be in pay entirely through capital improvement fund. The Haddon-Killenworth High School Fieldhouse Project, the board reviewed and approved the final recommendations from the Public Building Committee on renovations to the fieldhouse. Remediation and replacement of the fieldhouse floor will commence in late April. Additionally, the gym will be updated with new backboards, gym dividers, a center lift practice cage, paint and window tinting. Improvements will also be made to existing lighting, speakers, emergency evacuation system, and the bleachers. The approved project will cost just over $1 million. State reimbursements are expected and the remainder will be paid through capital fund. Administration has plans in place for activities that will be displaced due to the construction, such as project graduation celebration, which will be moved to the middle school. Other business, budget freeze. Due to more than expected outplacements, the special education tuition line was, is significantly over budget. As a result, the superintendent has frozen all but critical expenditures in an effort to offset the costs. The Board of Education Finance Committee and the superintendent continue to monitor the situation and are cautiously optimistic that we will come in just under budget for the year. As Bob stated, we had a board resignation. The Haddon Board of Education member, Gary Matthews, submitted his resignation and the grateful board thanked him for his service. The town of Haddon will hold a town meeting to replace Jerry's position for the remainder of his term. On our rsd17.org website is the budget season, which has begun, and we're working with that lovely thing. The superintendent's proposed budget can be found under Budget Information, and videos of meetings can be viewed under HK TV. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. All right, next item on the list are tax refunds. If you have a list in front of you, we have a request for eight real estate tax refunds, five motor vehicle tax refunds, and two motor vehicle supplement tax refunds, grand total of $12,626.77. Can I have a motion to approve the tax refunds as they've been presented to us?
I'll make that motion.
Motion is on the table. Any discussion on the refunds?
No.
No, I have a task to join about money.
Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, old business, I'd like to start with the Economic Development Commission appointment. And Kate, I will turn the floor over to you for that.
So we do have one vacancy on EDC right now. I would like to recommend that John Pembroke fill that vacancy. John submitted a very thorough narrative about his interest in joining. He's also subsequently been to every meeting. He's really, he's dove right in. He's already joined subcommittees to help out with the Muckit Madness Day. He has some background working with some other professional organizations within the state of Connecticut. I think he'd be a really great fit. So with that, I'd like to make that recommendation.
All right, motion is on the floor. To approve John Pembroke, discussion? Sean?
No. No, Katie will do.
Okay, yeah, I will note the, the other main candidate against, was interested in this has withdrawn, I think, for her interest, and everyone who has expressed an interest in this. Without any further discussion, can I have a vote to approve the appointment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any aye, any opposed? None? All right, appointment is, John Pembroke's approved. All right, next item of old business, this has obviously come up before because it's old business, for charter revisions. I sent some charter revisions to the, the Selectmen. What we're trying to do here is get what we want to send to the Charter Revision Commission to ask them to revise. So what you have are my proposals, some other proposals from Joe Santafonte from the Board of Finance. I'd like to start with ours. How would you like to proceed? We can go through these, the other hard copy. Well, we can share. That's the only hard copy I've got with me. All right, first one is just a housekeeping item, the table of contents. Right now, the tile in one of the sections is Director of Civil Preparedness. The title's obsolete. Everywhere else in the charter, it's referred to as it should be, Director of Emergency Management. And my recommendation is that we ask that to be cleaned up in the table of contents.
I agree, Senator.
Okay. All right, second one, in Section 6.3 J, when it talks about developing the budget, says the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, with input from the long-range county. of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, with input from the Long Range Capital Planning Committee shall develop the budget. That's not an exact quote, but it's close. I'm recommending we ask them to delete and, the words, and input from Long Range Capital Planning Committee. The reason I am asking for this, first of all, is background. The Long Range Capital Planning Committee, that's the only place it appears in the charter, but that committee was established by ordinance. In order to do anything to change the functions or disestablish that committee, it would require a town vote. We are looking at streamlining a change in some of our budget process that may or may not impact the functions of the Long Range Capital Planning Committee. If it does, I'd rather it be just, it'd be easier to do it through a town meeting, an ordinance change, than it would be to have to do an ordinance change and another change in the charter, in the charter. We shouldn't be opening the charter every time we see something we want to change. That should be something that happens every five or 10 years. So I don't want to get in the habit of just opening it ad hoc. So that's my recommendation. Discussion?
Meanwhile, the Board of Finance naturally is already working with the, with the, that committee anyway, right?
Well, the way it works, and this is part of the process we're trying to streamline, as a department head, you submit two budgets. One is your capital budget, one is your operating budget. The operating budget goes right to the Board of, through the town offices, to the Board of Selectmen for approval. The capital budget, in theory, goes to Long Range Capital Planning Committee. They may very well meet with the departments and discuss their requests. Again, like the Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen may not meet with all of them, but they'll meet with them. The Board of Selectmen may also ask the Board, the Board, the departments rather to come in, to meet on their budget request, both capital and operating. Then the budget goes to the Board of Finance, where the departments may go through the same process of coming in and answering some of the same questions to, through the Board of Finance. We're looking at possibly combining some of those meetings, and there's also some discussion that, given the complexity of financing, a long-range capital planning committee may not be an appropriate vehicle for that. No decisions have been made. We're just at the beginning of agreeing that, yeah, we have to talk about, should we change this process? But again, with that in mind, I'd like to, if we decide to change it, make the change as simple to implement as possible. It's going to be difficult, or more difficult, if we have to go through a charter change as well.
Makes sense.
Okay. All right. The next one is Section 8.14A, that deals with hiring and firing authority. I'm proposing that section be changed to read, "The Board of Selectmen shall be responsible for the hiring and termination of all town employees. Case-by-case basis, the Board of Selectmen may delegate these responsibilities to the first selectman. First selectmen or designated shall be responsible for the review, evaluation, and discipline of all town employees." Right now, that authority is split between the first selectman and the Board of Selectmen. The first selectman has the authority to discipline, but not terminate, and he or she has the authority to, not to hire, but to counsel, not all the steps of discipline. The Board, Board of Selectmen has, has authority on suspensions and terminations. It's muddled. It also conflicts with the union contracts we have with both our clerical union at the Town Hall and the Teamsters Union for Public Works. There's also a problem with some of the wording and conflicting with statute that I'll address later, but not with this change. My proposal here is just to clean up the wording a little bit, to give, to keep the hiring and termination with the Board of Selectmen approval. The discipline process in between up to termination would be a matter for the first selectman solely to handle. I've also put in there the option for the Board of Selectmen to delegate to the first selectman the authority on a case-by-case basis. My rationale for that is, we just hired a part-time employee for the transfer station attendant. To me, that doesn't necessarily rise up to the level of something the Board of Selectmen as a board should be looking at. On the other hand, if we are, certainly if we're hiring one of the department heads, like the Assistant Director of Public Works, Director of Finance, Tax Assessor, I think that certainly should come up to the board. So this gives the board the flexibility, if it wants it, on a case-by-case basis, to let the first selectman, yes, you can go ahead and do that hiring. Termination would stay with the Board of Selectmen. Contract approval would stay here. We're just changing some of the minor steps. With that, I'll open it for comment.
We, we discussed, well, it does open up to the possibility of nepotism at some point, and that's a big problem, especially coming from the town I used to work in, that was an issue there. So I have reservations about that. I think you'd have to find a way from that, then where the Board of Selectmen have, most definitely have to know all the candidates, and the first selectman would have to declare the relationships with, you know, personal or, or other, you know, relationships with, with the board. Because it's, I think it's dangerous, I think, really, is you start getting people that are not qualified just for getting, you know, who, the first selectman is at the time. You know, that's new, or whatever is there, but it's, but it could happen, it's happened in the past, so it's another challenge, and that's, I think we, run into a little problem there.
Okay. Kate?
Question about how you envision the case-by-case basis to work. So it's, so would it almost be like you bring, so let's say somebody, you're, we're hiring the part-time public works assistant. Would that process work? So we would say at the Board of Selectmen meeting, you know, we're interviewing for this person, may I have the board's permission to hire whomever we see fit? Is that how that would work?
That's basically how I would envision it. When we posted it, I would say, at that point, the first board is likely meeting after that and going forward and say, we have posted for this position. What's the board intent? Do you want the first selectman to handle it? Do you want the board level to handle it? And discussions?
It goes back, we need to know what the candidates are, and that's very important.
Okay. And certainly, that could be part of the discussion, that yes, once, once we see who the candidates are, will you do the final hiring? This just gives the, the board the flexibility to, at whatever point in time it may want, delegate it, or to not. Say no, this absolutely, the whole process has come through here.
So I think what we're doing now has a lot of checks and balances, and that's, that's very important, you know, to stop the government.
Okay. So would you like to go with the proposed wording? Would you like to change the proposed wording? Or what would make you comfortable?
Okay. With that, I'm, I'm interested to hear what the revision committee will come back with.
Yeah.
The only part I'm iffy about is on a case-by-case basis. I feel like that's, it's a little too vague.
It does get vague there, and that's, you know, without a set parameter, you could ask, or whoever the selectman is, you know, to, finance director. And really, that's a case-by-case basis with that, the majority party says, oh, sure, go ahead. Then you get, you know, and that's, and that's, that's a problem.
Yeah, maybe we further define the positions that could fall under the delegation. Because like you said, you know, a finance director, I think that, that should be a full board decision.
I think they're just, it does get a little vague. I understand why you want it, and I understand why, it makes it sort of streamlining sense, but with a bit of precaution, it really does. So if we table that, nothing special about that, you know. We define, maybe, maybe define at what hourly level or whatever, you know, whatever definition we decide, that will go forward. I do no problem with that.
Okay. Well, let me ask, what, what would you suggest? Because I'd like to get something so we don't have charter revisions when you move forward.
I have no problem with the, with the part-time non-benefit employees. That would, could be a case-by-case easily. For gentlemen, it would be fine, that's, that's not a problem. Some way, sort of like that, would make me happy.
Kate?
I mean, on the flip side, I look at, as, you know, any, any department head should not be a case-by-case basis. I think that's really where I would draw the line.
So you're looking at something like excluding department heads. There's still some pretty good, high-paying positions there that are, that would be covered on there, so.
My only pushback is, this still leaves the decision on whether to let the first selectman do it or not with the Board of Selectmen. Whoever it is, they'd have to come forward and say, we're hiring for this position. I propose you let me go through it. The board is well within its rights at that point to say, no. We've been concerned about some of your previous hires, we think it's too senior position, for you to determine by yourself. To me, that's the case-by-case, but if we can.
No, I understand that. I don't know, I think there'd be a problem with this board, because I, as, despite where, where, you know, we're not just going with the original word that you came up with. So I'm going to, probably this board, I look at future boards that may, may not be as open to discussion as we are. So I think that, that could be a problem. So I don't know how you want to proceed with that, but honestly, you know, I can see that Kate's, you know, director level is, is definitely out. I mean, maybe put that through and see what they come back with, that, that, I can probably check that.
All right. I'll take those one and two about rewording it, and perhaps at our next meeting, we can discuss. All right. The next one, Section 814B. Problem right now is the current wording of our charter violates the Municipal Employees' Relation Act, MERA. To address that, what I suggest, what the labor attorney suggests, is the Board of Selectmen shall establish, excuse me, wage rates, salaries, job description, and working hours for all town employees, except when the terms and conditions of employment of a town employee are governed by a collective bargaining agreement, and the town's obligations under applicable law. Yeah. And, and the Board of Selectmen's going to vote, I'm going to have to approve, whatever contract, so you've approved the wording that's in there. So this just keeps us from all going to jail, which is always one of my thoughts. Quite different to go when you know you're getting out, but still, when that door closes behind you. All right. The last one I had was Section 9.4, subsection C2, RFC2. There's a requirement that was added at the last charter revision, and honestly, everyone I've asked, talked to on the Charter Revision Committee can't say why. Some of them actually thought the increase was in the charter. I can find no reference similar to this in the previous charter. But basically, what I suggest is deleting the last paragraph, which says, "Transfers within agencies amount exceeding $1,000 are required Board of Finance approval." That just, the, basically, at, at the town meeting, we approved department's budget. There are some exceptions where it's individual lines. But this is talking about even lower than that sublines. My discussion through the years when I've been fire chief with the Board of Finance, which was basically asking, are you concerned about me exceeding an individual line, like truck maintenance, or my total baseline budget, whatever that is? Their answer's always been the total budget. If you need to move money from uniforms to truck maintenance, as long as the total doesn't exceed your budget, that's a department head decision to make. So all I'm asking for is we delete that. This causes, followed it to the letter, would cause an inordinate amount of work at both the department heads and town hall fiscal employees to bring things to the board and just slow everything down.
As you said, some people thought there was an increase in it, and they couldn't find it. I would suggest actually make an increase, leave a number in there, leave an increase, because at some point, we, we wouldn't have more finance, they would be like, why are they really asking for this?
The Board of Finance does typically, based on the meetings I've been to for the last few years, they review, part of their job is to review the budget and see what's being moved and why. And there have been questions about, like you had Sean on the tree budget, adding so much to it, why is that happening? Those questions are, come up automatically. So I would propose we just delete it rather than trying to set them out, because it just, it gets cumbersome for everybody.
Working with municipal government, but yes, I understand that part, but on the other side, I can see the financial side too, so I would, you know, my suggestion would be bump up to, you know, say $10,000, but we're not hiring for it, but that's.
Okay. Kate?
I'm fine with deleting it as is. I mean, as long as they're staying within their budget, within the total department budget. Our Board of Finance has always been very diligent about reviewing the monthly expenditures.
You know, the problem with that is no, very little recourse, you know, to, there's a suspension that was made that we really didn't want them to make in a line, and so we didn't budget for it, and all of a sudden, we're going to go in, and that would be a problem. Now, if they went, bought it anyway, well, we moved the money, it's not approved.
Yeah, except they should be getting a purchase order, and if they're doing it, so the purchase itself would be approved. So if we go again, how we've gone through, and we want to vote up individually?
Yeah, that's.
We, we had agreement on the first one. We had agreement on the second one, with the input from Long Range Capital Planning Committee. Changing the authority to potential case-by-case basis for hiring, I'll pull that one, put that one on hold. I think we have agreement on the, changing the words, the fourth item on here to comply with MERA. We can have a motion to approve sending those to the board, to the Charter Revision Committee for, for their consideration. Okay. Let's, we've got some discussion on this last one. Transfers over $1,000 within department's budget. I propose, let's call, call for a vote on this one. All in favor of sending that to the Charter Revision, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Two, the motion carries, we will send that as well, and Sean, I'll note your comments on that. All right. All right. The other item I have were charter revisions suggested by Joe Santafonte, Chairman of the Board of Finance. Frankly, I think these need to be developed, developed a little farther before we can send any of them on. I'd like to do that between now and our next meeting. I would appreciate any input from the two of you, send it to Joanne, and I will incorporate it. So hopefully, one way or another, we can get through this at the next meeting.
Just a general comment too. I was, I know this, like, the charter was just revised a couple of years ago, so my understanding when we were reopening this was really just to revisit things that were in conflict with state statutes. So I'm not disappointed, but this is a lot for a charter that was just revised a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and I tend to agree.
So I mean, definitely, I, I'll look through them, I'll, I'm more than happy to provide comments, but this is, this is a lot.
Another option we have is each chairman of the Board of Finance, he can send these directly to Charter Revision.
Yeah, I believe we should consider the role of comments at this point.
Okay. All right. So we'll table this part for next month.
I guess something's going to happen.
Okay. Thank you for that. We've covered our old business. New business, again, as stated, Jerry Matthews has resigned his position on the Board of Education there for a number of years of service, and what I think has got to be a thankless job. I appreciate anyone who's willing to be on the Board of Education. But in accordance with procedures to replace that member, it's, it's a vote on a town-wide basis, it's not a matter of minority representation, it doesn't have to be somebody of the same party. We have to have a town meeting. Nomination are taken from the floor at that meeting. As I said in the beginning, the town committee chairs have been notified, and if each contact meeting, what they'd like to put forward, anyone is welcome at the town meeting to put themselves or other people forward, and we will notice it appropriately. We are supposed to fill the vacancy within 30 days of its effective date. Jerry resigned effectively the 24th of February. The earliest, I think we could, the earliest we could have a town meeting and meet all the necessary notice requirements would be Tuesday, March 24th. I propose we have to schedule a special town meeting for Tuesday, March 24th. We'll take a look at the time, probably seven o'clock, 6:30, seven o'clock, for the sole purpose of filling that Board of Education vacancy. I'd make a motion to adjourn the meeting for
Make a motion, we can set a town meeting for March 24th.
Okay, motion is on the floor. Any other discussion?
Does that conflict with a standing Board of Ed meeting? Or is that, that's good? Okay.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, with that, we're back to final public comments. Ed?
Yeah. Questionable Board of Education, oh, sorry, is that going to be elected position?
It can be elected or appointed. Honestly, I haven't looked closely, I'm overproposing it maybe.
I know it's probably, probably going to have to do it for grants and all that, but be aware that they aren't going to be like the Board of Education, but they have. They're going to have the authority to go out for their own bonds and through referendum, and it's going to bypass the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. Just wanted to give you that heads up. Thank you.
Yes, Paulson?
Yeah, a couple of questions. The Capital Plan, have you guys seen that yet? Is that done, or do you have a timeline of when they'll be finished?
The Capital Plan should be discussed at the next Board of Finance meeting, I believe, or the one immediately after that.
So it's skipped right by you guys?
Well, what they're basing the work on is last year's Capital Plan is submitted by the Long Range Capital Planning Committee and the Board of, and the Board of Selectmen.
But so this new board, you guys have not, and will not discuss it? Okay. You mentioned that there were other candidates that you heard for the Board of Ed's Jerry's seat. You mentioned there are other candidates, we did put forward one. Who were the other candidates that you heard about?
Well, it's just one other. The only other one is Prem Athol from the Republican Town Committee.
Okay.
I said, it's opened out of the candidates, but I've not heard of any of them. We haven't noticed it, so I'm not surprised.
Right, just those two. Okay. And then, last question, then I have a final comment. The last question is, the, is there any update on the Silver Springs Chatham Lake? Have you guys discussed that at all, or had a meeting with them?
We have not. I've had, I think I mentioned in the previous Board of Selectmen meeting, had a meeting with the homeowners association, it's been formed, the dam has been repaired. They should express some concern, a town attorney's going to be working with them on some of their liability issues, but nothing has been resolved.
So you did meet with the homeowners association?
With representatives thereof, yes. And also, technically, the town's a member because we own lots there.
So is that something that you foresee the Board of Selectmen discussing in early meeting?
Yes, because we'll have to have some agreement on that going forward.
Okay. And then finally, just a comment. I want to, this is my first meeting since you all took office. I've been very busy, but I'm glad to be here, and I have to say that I'm very proud of the way you all are acting right now. Coming from four years of pretty caustic meetings and swearing at residents, pointing, yelling, not bringing, I, you said, Mr. McGary, to Kate, that you were going to let the Board of Finance or who, no, the Charter Revision Commission know of their comments. That is unheard of, has been unheard of the past four years. So I really appreciate the working together. I think that's important for Haddon today and the future. So thank you, congratulations.
Thank you for that. Like we've all said, we can disagree, we have disagreed, we saw it here tonight, but we can be civil about it. Hopefully, others will follow the lead. Yes, Ed?
All right, quick one. Town manager's, do you six?
It's up for the Charter Revision Committee to look at. That's part of the reason why they were reconstituted, was to do that. You know, as I've said, when I was campaigning, I am not in support of it, although I'm willing to listen to why it should be, if that's what they recommend. But I don't think I've had anybody who lives in town express to me support for a town manager position.
We haven't. At the last Charter Revision Committee meeting, the general consensus seemed to be not be moving forward with researching that position, but we will put something in writing to that effect, to make it official.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think that was the problem with the last report from the committee, they didn't recommend it or kill it. It's all I'm looking for, one or the other, please. Yes?
Yes, Ed Munson. You mentioned the name of the Republican who's going to be potentially a candidate for the Board of Ed's seat. I didn't hear the name of the other candidate, you said there was another.
Oh, God, I should have it off the tip of my tongue, and I don't.
It's Katie Peck.
Katie, I read that, yes, you sent it to me today. Thank you. All right, anything else? All right, with that is now, 6:26 by that clock, I think it might be 7:26. We'll take care of that after the meeting. I can have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? All right. Motion carries. Again, thank you for attending, or those of you watching, thank you for taking the time to do so.